To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation in our own, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you pray with me? Father, we are so thankful for the need of rain for our city and state. We would also pray that the families whose homes that were damaged or destroyed by the recent tornadoes, that you keep them close. Help those who lost loved ones stay strong and find comfort that you are there to help them get through these tough times. Please be with our retirees as they embark on a new journey. May they enjoy their retirement by spending time with their families, vacationing places they always wanted to go, or just relaxing in a place of their choosing. We want to thank them for all of their hard work, dedication, and the love that they have shown our students through the years of service for the Pond City Schools. Our seniors will soon take a leap into another chapter of their lives by way of secondary education, vocational education, the armed forces, or joining the workforce. Be with them as they take this next step, that they will be successful in whatever they decide to do. And please be with the Board of Education as they make decisions that affect our students and our staff. And also, Father, be with our men and women of the armed forces as they serve and protect and defend. We ask it in your name. Amen.
Welcome and thank you for coming. We are going to recognize and honor our 2014, 2015 school employee retirees. We have quite a crowd tonight, and we're so glad that you're all here. When I call your name, please come forward, and Dr. Pinton will present you your commemorative plaque. First, we have, and I've really got to practice saying this name, Ms. Beverly Bogger. Now, I tell you why I have to practice saying her name. Beth has taught kindergarten in this district for many years. She has 39 years' experience in 34 with our district, and the kindergarteners called her Miss Bogger. Sorry, Ms. Sarah, I saw one of her speech paths come in. Sorry about that, Ms. Sarah. Thanks for your service, Beth. Next, we have Susan Blake. Susan Blake currently teaches special ed at Garfield for the next few days, that is. She was telling her students that it's time for her to retire because she's getting old, and one of her students thought that she was probably around in the Civil War. Next, we have Sheila Connor. Sheila teaches science at West Middle School. She's been with our district for 25 and a half years. And Sheila, your colleagues tell me that you love HGTV, and you're going to have plenty of time to watch from now on. Thanks for your service. Next, we have Tanya Gibson. Tanya has taught in our district for 40 years. And guess what? She's coming back next year. So she's going to work for us part-time next year. And Holly told me that when Tanya was first hired here, the superintendent, Superintendent Robson, took her around to find an apartment. So have you been doing that? We also have Jeannie Grant. Jeannie teaches pre-K at Lincoln. She's taught for us for six years, but she taught at first Lutheran for several years before that. Jeannie has mentored seven teachers since she's been employed with us, and we've hired six of them. So obviously, she's doing something right. Thanks so much, Jeannie. Next, we have Karen Ensign. Karen teaches kindergarten at Roosevelt. And Karen said it is definitely time for her to retire because her badge broke today. She must help to print her a new one. And I don't think she really wanted to retire. I kept telling her I need a resignation letter. I told her I was going to bring a napkin by the school. She said, "Where's your napkin?" We appreciate your service. We have Janice Enske. Janice has been with the district for 20 years. She currently teaches 4th grade at Woodlands. And Janice, I hear that you are not going to have to borrow glasses from your coworkers in your home. By the way, they are on your head. Rebecca Kruger, Becky. She is the current principal at Woodlands, and you know, Woodlands is moving back home. They've been at Washington for a remodel. We think that she just didn't want to move again, so she's retiring. She wants to spend time with her grandkids, but her husband says he wants to travel some without the grandkids, so we'll see what happens. We also have Donna Murs retiring. She teaches pre-K at Liberty. She's going to miss her pre-kers doing the opening assembly. She has tons of fun with her pre-kers. Give Donna a big round of applause. Dr. James Pow is also retiring. Is Dr. Pow here this evening? I didn't see him. He's been with the district for 24 years. We also have Ruth Riley. She is a retiring counselor. She's been with our district for 14 years. She actually taught 1st grade at Roosevelt. She went to grade school at Roosevelt, and now she serves as counselor at Roosevelt, and she's coming back part-time as counselor at Roosevelt. Janet Silkie is also retiring. She's an assistant principal at the high school. Janet said she began her career in this building and ended her career in this building. She was asked to give a speech to new teachers when she was hired, and here she is, retiring in the new board's administration office. Ms. Doris Lane retiring tonight. She is one of our school nurses, and I have not seen Doris. She's been with us for nine and a half years. We also have Holly Theobald. She's counselor at Union Elementary. Holly is actually coming back to us part-time next year as counselor at Union. And the reason she is coming back is Holly loves professional development. We have Jan Williams from the high school. She teaches special ed at high school. I haven't seen Jan here tonight, but she's been with our district for 19 years. Those are all of our certified retirees, so one more round of applause for her. Next, we have several support retirees as well. We have Linda Arnold from the high school. She's custodian at the high school. And Linda has been with us for 17 years. And the thing that she's going to miss most about serving as a custodian at the high school would be the parties they have upon a Thursday. Oh, they're Christmas parties in Oklahoma. Bill Dennison is also retiring tonight. Is Mr. Dennison here? I did not see him. He is the warehouse truck driver for our child nutrition program, and he's been with our district for nine years. We have Ellen Harris. She is our current secretary at Woodlands Elementary. She's been with the district for 24 and a half years. Her husband retired last year, and something you may not know is they met each other on the job. So, hey. Next, we have Danny Hurd. Danny Hurd is our child nutrition program custodian, and he's been with us for 25 and a half years. And he actually introduced Ellen and her husband. Thelma Jernigan. Is Thelma here? I didn't see Thelma. She works at the senior high in the child nutrition program. She has been with us for 31 years. We also have David Kurtz. He's custodian at Trout, and I don't see him here. He has been with us for seven years. We have Mary Ladd. Mary is the administrative assistant to our secretary. She's been with the district 30 years, and she has broken in five superintendents. Well, actually, she is going to continue to work for us just a little bit, so we appreciate all Mary's done. Is Doug here? I didn't see Doug. He's a custodian at Trout, and he's been with us for 25 years. Also, we're going to recognize Winnie Milligan. Winnie actually retired in September. She was with us for 18 years. She was Brett's secretary for many years. She's not here tonight. And then Kenneth Orr worked in technology for us, and he actually retired in October, and he's not with us tonight. He was with us 16 years. So on behalf of the Board of Education and Pond City Public Schools, enjoy your late coffee in the morning. We appreciate your service.
Just want to echo what Shelley said. You know, we lose a lot of really talented people today. A lot of people who, in my 11 years in this district, I've had the opportunity to work with and to watch, and really some folks who are, I don't know that any of us are irreplaceable, but we're losing some people today who are pretty close to that. So obviously, you know, the Board and for myself, I appreciate what you do, and I know that you guys have sure made this an easy job for me. So again, congratulations. I'm sure that Shelley has talked to all of the teachers already about substituting, working part-time, or all those things. If you, once you've been out and you're bored, then you can come back and see us. You know, I think I saw Pat Borser somewhere. See, Pat's already back. Pat didn't even get done for you before we had her come back. We obviously need your help, and we need your wisdom, and we'd really like, again, whether it's volunteer work or whatever. I think probably once you're a teacher, you're always a teacher, and that never goes away. The same thing to our support staff. Obviously, I think at Lincoln, or at Woodlands, I'm sorry, the fact that, you know, we're losing the person who thinks they run the school, or actually losing the person who really runs the school. So we've got two big issues to deal with there. Anyway, thank you, guys, and we appreciate you being here tonight.
I'm more than honored to present this award. Carol Madison is our Certified Employee of the Month. She is a tech coach for the district, and this is what her colleagues said about her. Carol Madison is an integral part of West Middle School. She does a superb job of supporting the teachers and students by meeting them whenever they are on the technology learning curve and helping them stretch and experience new things. She encourages teachers to think outside the box, inspires them to explore new teaching methods, and provides the support they need to uniquely incorporate technology into their classrooms. Carol works to engage our staff by frequently emailing the great tips and resources to enhance learning for our students. Whether it is hardware, software, websites, or apps, Carol will work diligently to find what we need. Carol's enthusiasm is contagious. When she finds something new or runs across a new way to use a familiar device, she eagerly shares and encourages the teachers at West to give it a try. Carol has the ability to speak technology in a way that allows others to feel confident and able. Her passion for learning and engaging students motivates others to want to jump in and try new things. Carol is also very diligent. She often spends time outside of the school day researching products or ideas for teachers. Carol is not just a consultant, but is hands-on throughout projects and learning activities. Students benefit from Ms. Madison's enthusiastic participation in classroom activities and projects. Technology integration is often messy and unpredictable. When issues arrive, Carol is fast to respond and lend a hand so that the frustration of others is instantly reduced. Carol is an asset to our building in so many ways that we know she deserves to be Employee of the Month. Congratulations.
This is a coordinated effort between Woodlands Elementary, or Woodington, or whatever we call them, and the child nutrition program. In a coordinated effort between the two of us, we are delighted to recognize Ms. Kinney as the May 2015 Support Employee of the Month. Ms. Mead has served in the capacity as the child nutrition secretary and office assistant for the past few years, and has also worked at various other clubs in the district. Next fall, she will be serving in the capacity of the Woodland Secretary, which means you will be in charge of the town. Each day, Ms. Mead has the wonderful opportunity of getting to talk to almost every Woodlands student as they finish selecting their breakfast and lunch in the cafeteria. She knows every student's name and probably hears more stories than she can remember or really can repeat. She meets and greets every student with a smile and friendly word. She often is the first person that parents and patrons meet each day as they arrive on campus. Ms. Mead is quick to step outside of her assigned duties and area and assist any staff or student when needed. Her work with both child nutrition and Woodlands Elementary is meticulous with every key crossed and every eye dotted. We are very proud to recognize her as the May 2015 Support Employee of the Month.
Thank you. Now, for Support Employee of the Month for the month of April, she was liable to be with us last year. Betty Johnston.
I am very excited to be able to present this to Betty. Everybody's been really helpful since I've come down to the central administration office, but Betty puts up with the block. Betty Johnston is the State Reports Coordinator for the Pond City Public School System. She has worked closely with Tyrell Hills during this year's transition from ISIS to Power School. No matter what question a staff member may have regarding student information, Betty can find it. And what we often hear is, we'll say, we'll have a question, and then everybody will think for a second, Betty will know. She keeps track of attendance, medical alerts, subgroups, discipline, transfers on the way, and the list goes on and on and on and on. Betty is the individual that keeps the district in compliance regarding records. Her work ethic is outstanding, and her record keeping is impeccable. She is a true team player who steps in when needed in any department. Although her plate is full regarding accreditation and compliance, she greets everyone who asks her a question with a smile and a can-do attitude. Betty is a problem solver, and she pays close attention to the details. I cannot think of a person who deserves this award more. Betty works behind the scenes and does not have direct contact with students, but the school district could not function without the hard work of individuals like Betty Johnston, who day after day take care of the paperwork required by the state.
Now, for the Friends of Education Award goes to Teresa Benson.
Teresa Benson from the First Christian Church is this month's Friend of Education. Teresa headed the tutoring project for 3rd graders at Lincoln Elementary this year. She has dedicated a major amount of time and effort to this endeavor. Teresa gathered 16 to 18 volunteers to be involved in the project. She scheduled training for them so that they would be well-versed in the reading strategies that were to be used. All tutors were trained in close reading. She created all of the folders for the individual students and tutors, researched the chosen strategy, and kept track of all the copies and paperwork for the tutoring sessions. Teresa is a former teacher and knows how important education is to becoming a successful citizen. She is wonderful to work with and goes above and beyond to help her community. Thank you, Teresa, for your dedication to education. Lincoln Elementary salutes you.
All right, thank you, Marvin. This will be pretty quick because the legislative update and budget update are both the same. And that is, we are now about three weeks out from the end of the session, and we have really no meaningful education legislation that's been enacted, and we have no budget. Probably the piece of legislation that probably the Board, I think, would be most interested in would be that we have a piece of, two things legislatively that involve assessment, that the legislature's wrestling with. And I think there's still some chance that some legislation could be passed, and I think we would all be very supportive of. The first one has to do with 3rd grade retention. Remember last year about this time, the legislature passed a 3rd grade retention bill that the governor vetoed, and then the legislature overrode that veto. The problem with that bill was it was only for two years. And so unless another piece of legislation is passed either this session or next session, then we go back to the law the way it was originally written, which is if a student does not score satisfactory or above on the 3rd grade reading test, they are automatically retained without any right of appeal. There have been several efforts throughout this session to put the bill in its current form in a permanent legislative state. But the hangup is that there are some members of the legislature that, right now, the way the law reads, if a student scores limited knowledge or above, they are automatically promoted. There are some members of the legislature that want to go ahead and make that standard to be proficient, not limited knowledge. So that's part of the hangup. The other part of the hangup is a big discussion about exactly what the test should be. Right now, what we call the reading test is a reading and language arts test. And so there are some in the legislature that think it should be a reading test only. And so when you have, you know, two groups who want different things in a piece of legislation, sometimes that makes it hard to get through the legislature. So they have a year with that, so if we don't get something done this session, they can obviously deal with that next session. But we don't have a law change, though. By the time we get to the end of the school year of the 15th, 16th school year, then the original law, which is a requirement that a student demonstrates proficiency on the state reading test, those students will be retained. The other has to do with the ACT test, or replacing EOI assessments with the ACT test or an ACT product. The hangup in that particular piece of legislation, there are kind of two things. One of them is there's a group that believes that we should have the state standards written that we are going to use as our, if you remember last year, the legislature did away with Common Core, and they directed the State Department to write new standards. We've been operating on past standards this year, and there are some that think that the new standards should be written before we either change the EOI or move to the ACT or Work Keys exam. There's another group, though, who believe that ACT is linked to the Common Core, and so they object to ACT because if you look at ACT's materials, they will say that they are aligned with Common Core. You know, we've had this discussion a couple, we had a lot this time last year, that Common Core standards are just standards. They're the next evolution of standards. And so whether we write our own standards, whether we adopt the Common Core standards, they're going to look a lot like the standards that we call Common Core today. Whether that's politically popular or not, that's the reality of standards. What ACT also says in their paperwork is that they are college and career-ready standards. And the standards that the State Department is writing, they are directed to be college and career-ready standards. So if the ACT is college and career-ready standards, then there's really no reason, from a standards perspective, not to go ahead and adopt the ACT as the exit exam for students in the state of Oklahoma. It would obviously make it very easy, a lot easier when it comes to doing assessments. Instead of giving seven different exams, you could give one, which would save a lot of classroom instruction time. It would save a lot of planning time. You'd also be giving students a test that they could use for something. That test would be usable for colleges, universities that they wanted to apply for, and for those students who maybe chose not to take the ACT, but they chose the Work Keys instead, which is also an ACT product. Then you would have a test score that would indicate to your local manufacturing community that these students had academic skills necessary for the advanced training that needs to receive before they can be ready to go to work for most of our industries in town. So there's lots of pluses making that change, but we're in the middle of, again, another legislative logjam over the assessment issue. One piece of legislation that has passed, it's gotten a lot of attention across the state, is a ban of the use of tobacco products on any school sites 24 hours a day, seven days a week, which is something this Board has already done. You adopted that policy change, was it last spring or last fall? It was last spring as a way for us to be part of the healthy community initiative that the city is a part of. So we've already taken that action, so that will not be a change for us. But it is hopefully a clear signal to everyone in Oklahoma that we are serious about protecting the health of our students. The budget is at standstill. Right now, there's not been any agreement between the Governor's Office and the President, pro tempore in the Senate, or the Speaker of the House. And typically, what has to happen is those three people have to at least agree on the numbers that each department's going to have before the legislature gets down into the serious business of running the budget. The problem is, is we have a $600 million shortfall. And so trying to figure out how they're going to fill that shortfall is what the issue is. How much money are they going to take out of the rainy day fund? How much money are they going to take from agency fund balances? How much are they going to cut? There's been a lot of discussion about holding education harmless. I have never thought that would happen. I still don't think that will happen. I think we're going to take a cut. I think it'll probably be 2% or 3%, you know, I don't know for sure. There's even some discussion, there was a proposal that came up last week, about a plan to give teachers a $1,000 pay raise. And I don't know what's going to happen, but I want to outline the details of that for you because it has lots of problems. The first problem is, right now, about $300 million a year comes off the top. And what we mean by that is, when you look at the legislature making appropriations, the budget dollars, the tax revenues that are used for appropriation, before they go through the appropriation process, $300 million of that money goes directly to the teacher retirement system. And that money goes to the teacher retirement system because about 10 years ago, we had a severe funding liability with teachers. we had a severe funding liability with teacher retirement. We call it being actuarially sound. And what actuarially soundness basically means is that everybody in the system retired at the same time and they were going to live for another 20 years, do you have enough money to pay for all their retirement benefits? And 10 years ago, our system was at about a 50% actuarially soundness. So it's meant that we could do that for about half the people who might retire. Now, you've got to remember, everybody's never going to retire at the same time and everybody's not going to live 20 years after they retire. Some people are going to live 10, some people are going to live 30, some people may live five. There are people who've paid the teacher retirement system for a long time and who've never collected retirement because they passed away or they ever retired. When the legislature did that, they set a target of 100% actuarially soundness. That's what we've wanted to be, was 100% actuarially sound. Retirement experts would recommend that you get to 85%. If you're 85% actuarially sound, then you have a very sound retirement system. In fact, I don't think there's any retirement system in the country that meets the 85% threshold. So to do that, the legislature took some steps. One, they quit giving cost of living increases for retirees. Those used to be automatic, but the way the legislation is written now, that you can receive a cost of living increase unless the legislature actually appropriates money for that increase, which they've not done. They increased the retirement age so that now, some of us are under a point system. You have to have, in my case, I have to have 80 points. When my age and experience equal 80, I can retire. There's another level of individuals who enter the rule of 90. When their age and experience equal 90, they can retire. We passed a piece of legislation three years ago that I think, if I'm not mistaken, you can't retire until I think you reach 67, regardless of the number of points that you have. The other thing, they started to put the $300 million off the top and they made another change. And that was that the legislature can't enact any piece of legislation that affects the teacher retirement system without an actuarially sound. Because the retirement system had the habit of doing things without seeing how that affected the soundness of the system. Okay? Well, the prediction is that the system will be actuarially sound in 2025. We'll be up to that 100% number. That $300 million that is allocated to teacher retirement right now, when we reach actuarially soundness, that money could come, goes up for grabs. So the legislature would not be putting $300 million a year into that anymore. They would, then that money could be appropriated for anything else. And so what's happened is we have Clark Jolly, who is the chairman of the Appropriations Community Senate, has come up with this idea. He wants to extend the actuarially soundness from 2025 to I think 2037. Okay? And so what has to happen is, so as long as the group in the legislature that says, that certifies money, I can't think of their name right now. But it's the governor, the lieutenant governor, equalization board. So when the state equalization board says that the system has enough money in it that it would continue this level of contribution, it will be actuarially sound in 2037. He believes if we do that today, that will free up $35 million of that $300 million. He wants to take that $35 million, then he wants Secretary Hoffmeister to pull $35 million out of her line item budget that she has in the state department of education, combine those two dollars, which would equal $70 million, and then use that $70 million to provide a $1,000 pay raise for every teacher in San Antonio. That has not died outright. There are people looking at that very seriously. Secretary Hoffmeister has not committed to that. Obviously, teachers, administrators, other groups are very concerned about pulling any money out of the, away from the teacher retirement system. This is not pulling money out of the system. This is just changing the revenue, changing that amount of dedicated dollars and taking part of it and putting it, actually, the $35 million would go into the 1017 fund. With the idea being that every year, that more and more money was not needed to get us to 100% actuarially soundness, that that money would go into the 1017 fund where it would reserve for schools. That's one idea. The other idea is that we just, after we've taken money out of the rainy day fund, after we've taken money out of the accounts of lots of state agencies, that we look and see how much money's left and everybody takes a cut except for Rhodes. And if that happens, I think the rejected cut for education right now is about 5%. So that's where we are, we really don't have any idea. Here's the good news. Because of the mistake that we discovered, that was discovered in the way the state was calculating the state aid formula, by not properly accounting for districts that lived in counties that had assessment ratios above 11%, the additional dollars that we received this, in December, and that we receive every year from this point forward, means that whatever cut that we take this year, we won't have to make any changes in our staff structure. We'll be able to absorb those cuts and move forward. Now, that's good for this year. The other thing that you need to be aware of is that there are those that are predicting that next year's budget shortfall will be a billion dollars. So this is not, does not look like a one-year loss of revenue. That we'll have a loss of revenue for 15, 16, and then a loss of revenue for 16, 17. People that follow this and watch it very closely will tell you that we don't have a revenue problem, we have an expenditure problem, and that we need to get a hold, the favorite target is the incentives that go to the business across the state. You know, I don't know if that's the real answer or not, I'm not enough of a budget expert to know that. I know that our state treasurer, Ken Miller, for the first time finally said that the legislature is going to have to, I'm not sure exactly how he said it, but he said that it cannot continue to cut taxes without significant cuts in spending. And not temporary cuts in spending, but permanent cuts in spending. That we're going to have to look at our state, at our budget, we're going to decide what really is important for us to spend money on. And we're going to have to start making some serious cuts to some of the agencies in this state. So that's where we are. There's also a movement to try to get the legislature to postpone the tax that was supposed to go into effect July 1st. There doesn't seem to be any will on the part of the legislature to do that. If they did that, our budget shortfall, instead of being $600 million, would be $550 million. So, any questions, legislation, budget, any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you David. Consent calendar. Any motion to approve the consent calendar?
No second.
Done. Call for vote.
No discussion.
Any discussion?
One item on the Lewis Architects. This contract is going to be on projects. This is only special, other items throughout the district, he works on little things and stuff. It has nothing to do with bond, that's a different contract. So I just wanted you guys to know that, talk about it, because it's not that thing. Do you notice that problem?
Yes.
Did you guys talk about it in properties a little bit, or didn't? Okay.
I was interviewing coaches.
We didn't. I think when we talked about it in finance, that we thought it was the contract for the upcoming bond projects. And that's when Brett Dill, the researcher, discovered that this was just for the stuff he does during, just all the little projects that we have him do for us during the year.
So, the vote is to modify the, his contract, clarifying.
If we're just clarifying what this is for.
Let's lift up the last students. Do that.
Call for vote.
Dr. Kincaid.
Aye.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Tru.
Aye.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Very good. 6.1, consideration of the vote to approve or not approve the following district financial reports.
Motion to approve. I'm anxious. Second.
Second.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Tru. Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid.
6.2, consideration of and vote to approve or not approve the accepting bid of $315,990 to renovate and upgrade the Anderson Building HVAC system base two. Any discussion?
I guess this item will be, starts soon, school shuts down. It'll have to be trimmed out by August.
Yeah, he'll actually start ordering stuff now.
Call for vote.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Tru. Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid.
Aye.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Thank you. 6.3, consideration of and vote to approve or not approve acceptance GMP grant, guaranteed maximum price for the Sullivan Restaurant project. Any discussion?
Yeah, this was the one that we talked about at the last meeting and then we talked about it again at the property. I believe it's going to be the board wanting to also do concession stands. This particular motion, the item, does not include concession stand renovations. And we talked about that, we talked about it in the property committee also. If I remember, we approved a million and 29,000 last.
Brett, why don't you address that?
Yeah, this guaranteed maximum price does not include the concession stand work. So we'll have to include that, so we have to redo this guaranteed maximum price. So we'll need to not approve this one. And we'll come back with the rest of the prices included if you so choose.
Or could we approve this one and then go for a change order? Additional expense for the concession stand?
You would approve the project, but it's still not a guaranteed maximum price.
Right, because there's going to be, there will be more, $50,000 more.
You would approve the entire amount, but it did include that concession stand, yes. But this guaranteed maximum price is what you will not approve tonight if you choose.
Okay, so they need to table it or not approve, Brett?
Just table it.
Just table it, okay. Well, this, yeah, the question I have is, will they still be able to go ahead and start remembering?
Yes.
Okay, so this one.
They approved the contract.
This one, okay, so we've approved the contracts, they can go ahead and order stuff. We've just got to figure out exactly what the scope's going to be.
That GMP, that particular thing is what we've got to figure out.
All right, so my recommendation to the board would be that we table this tonight and then when we meet in June, we'll have the final, final guarantee.
Run it back to the property committee.
Run it back to the property committee and have the right, the correct price, including the renovation concession stand.
Does that sound right? Sounds good.
I move then that we change 6.3 and table.
We need to vote to table. Okay. Okay, I move table. Robin Madden motion.
Robin.
Mrs. Tru.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid. Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. 6.4, consideration of and vote to approve or not approve the application for the participation of the 2015 summer food service program for children. Any discussion?
What schools is this going to be at? Lincoln and West.
Is that right Jeff?
Yes.
Okay.
Is it only going to be at Lincoln?
That's all that ever.
Yeah, it's June.
I guess I thought it was for two.
Is that where the reading program is this year at Lincoln?
Yeah, the summer, yeah, summer academy will be, for elementary will be at Lincoln. And I don't know about West. Is that their summer school or is that just the, that's just the?
It's just because we're already at, because we can prepare stuff at West and take it over to Lincoln.
Oh, okay.
You know, we moved last year because we had Lincoln closed down because of construction so we're back at Lincoln where we normally are.
Does any kid get, come and do this?
Jeff, why don't you come up and explain the program?
No, it's July 1st to the 31st, 1st to the 25th.
We do this for the month of June. When we first started about 20 years ago, we did entire summer, but there's a lot of dynamics in doing the program. Early enrollment and activities in school kind of keep us from doing it a lot in July, but also participation is so low in July that we have to be a revenue neutral program. And in July, we're finding that we're covering our costs. So in different areas of the community, and there's other people out there, First Lutheran's doing it, Southwest Army's doing it. So it's around the community. But we're looking at Lincoln because of the summer school, but just breakfast. And then they can walk over for lunch at West, and West is lunch. And it's just the month of June. And of course, the Y C A, younger's come in. We do a pretty good amount, 600 to 700 a day for lunch at West. But in July, we don't have any, it has to be cost effective.
How do these kids know about it?
We've advertised, when I was at assemblies in the school, I talked about it. There was a press release, Mary released today, the radio stations, I've talked to those, a few of them talked about it, and then the newspaper always, a little, sort of area of information. 118. And so it's, you don't have to pay adults, and this is a USDA program. It's a little bit different than our regular child support program. And the way that they, the way they pay us and the way they do eligibility, any child can come in. So it's not just low interest, any child can be.
Any questions? Thanks Jeff.
Thanks.
For voting to be back. Motion for 6.4.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid.
Aye.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Tru.
Aye.
6.5, consideration of and vote to approve or not approve resolution for schools and libraries universal services E-rate for 2015, 16. Any move? Approved, second.
Dr. Kincaid.
Aye.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Tru. Mr. Clark.
6.6, consideration of and vote to approve or not approve an increase in full price student lectures for 2015, 2016 school year. Jeff, is this coming?
With the Hallety Hungary Kids Act of 2012, required to increase our full price, that's the only price that Hughes set. The other prices, the free re dues are set by the federal government. And what they want is those prices to eventually equal one day. But that's never going to happen because each year they increase that price. That is greater.
What's the difference in the price? Like from elementary?
It's, what are they, we're increasing by a dime in elementary and middle.
No, I mean, what's the difference in the spread? You said one's got to be federal government.
Well, we did for all mills, we did around $3, it was a good number to use for reimbursement. So there's a big gap there. But also, you know, we're a self-sufficient program, we have positive cash flow. The low income, I mean, the full price mills are the students who do not qualify for free re dues. And they're the students that pay full price for everything they do in every aspect of their life. I've never really wanted to increase that same margin that the federal government increases. What the federal government gives us for reimbursement mills is the same in New York, California, it is in Oklahoma. And that's the $3. And so we feel like we're covering our costs and so we take the minimal amount of increase that we can. Full price mills make up less than 15% of the mills to be served. So it's not a huge part of it. And I just feel like most people in the community that are paying full price, if you have three or four kids in school, that's quite a lot to cut. And if we're making it financially, then we really don't need to increase the price on them when we don't have to. So, but there's a formulation that the federal government gives us based on their expenses that you do for. duty for the minimum amount that we have to increase, and this is the minimum amount that we have to increase. Last year, we took the higher increase at the high school and lowered at elementary. This year, we're on the opposite, picking the higher amount at elementary and the lower at high school. And since the meal pattern is the same for East and West as at this elementary, we like those prices to kind of be a little closer. But that's what we're getting, but 215 at elementary, 225 at East and West, and two very, very private high schools on full meal is a heck of a deal. It's a very big deal. But if you're feeding, you have four kids in school, that's a lot of money. So we want to make sure that we're equal. And we'll be here every May or June to do this.
But we still do it at St. Mary's?
We still are doing St. Mary's. They're at, this is our second year, when we started providing their meals, they were running about 60, 55 to 60 a month, they're at 100 right now, I'm still, I mean, a day, I'm sorry, a day. And the state sets that price, and I believe it's 335. So they pay a little higher amount.
So they pay 335?
They pay us for providing that service, and they provide the service. So it's a really big difference, and it comes out of East, and really helps a lot more in East.
I guess I didn't realize it was that far apart, I thought it was closer to both.
Yeah, the state sets that category. It's called the category. That's why we like it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Jeff. Do you have any questions?
I'll make the motion for six point, to increase the launch.
Second. Call for vote.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt.
Aye.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid.
Aye.
Okay. Six point seven, consideration of and vote to approve or not approve the following contracts and agreements. Renewal agreement with Burnett Security Investigations for Security in high school for 2015, 2016 school year. Renewal contract for Burnett Security and Investigations Inc. for Career Services for 2015, 2016 school year. Amendment to Clearwater Enterprises contract to provide third-party natural gas to qualified schools. Agreement with Lewis Associates Architectural Services for fiscal year 16. Agreement with two fellows in vehicle moving company to move Lewis Elementary School. Agreement with two fellows in vehicle moving company to move Trout Elementary School. Agreement with Evans Associates Construction Company to move fencing, install resurfaced tennis courts, and install striping for additional parking and east administration service. And renewal agreement with Blackwood Contract, Blackwood Canad Inc. for callouts. Any discussion?
Yes, on A, B, and H, rather those were the increases, about the same. On this one? Burnett, both Burnett contracts, and then that board.
The Burnett is, I believe, just a little bit, I think, which increases a little bit for cost, and I'm sure basically the same. Blackwood, I'm not sure.
It's not significantly different.
Why did the Burnett Security go across the street and smoke on Southern Street?
It's open school.
Why do they do that? If we're paying that type of salary, why do they go across the street multiple times a day and smoke?
That's a good question.
I don't think they should. You know, I think that's very uncomfortable for them, and that allows the kids to follow all those houses along Seven Street, you know what happens. So how do we stop that?
I believe you have to, Mr. Burnett, if that's odd.
We're paying $60,000 a year, I think they should stop it.
Motion to approve that, do you have any? You want to follow up with?
Absolutely.
For that, about that.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt.
Aye.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid.
Aye.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Six point eight, consideration of and vote to approve or not approve, opposed in that concession.
We probably have a short.
To discuss possible termination, designation, reservation, and ones of personnel, to discuss confidential conversation with attorney, to discuss the purchase or appraisal of real property, and to discuss negotiations. Any questions, go to a separate session. I'll move it. Call for vote.
Mrs. Truitt. Well, Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid.
Aye.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt.
Okay, we'll return to open session. Minutes of effective session are kept by the board members, clerk, and will remain confidential. Six point one, one, vote to approve or not approve recommendations for termination, reassignment, resignation, and employment of personnel. Move to approve six eleven. Second. Second vote. Don.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid.
Aye.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt.
Okay. No nuances. No nuances. No nuances. Motion to adjourn. Lewis. All favor. Aye. Thank you very much.